Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
MCAS Accountability Report Presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight I want to focus on providing you with an overview of the new Massachusetts Accountability System and MCAS. At the end of this presentation, if you would like me to follow up with anything for future conversations, please -- as I begin, please note the Department of Education may revise this new accountability system in the future. So, a little bit about the new accountability system. There have additional accountability indicators, so it provides information about school performance and student opportunities beyond test scores. There are two components, a normative and criterion reference component. It's focused on raising the performance at each school's lowest performing students. It discontinues the accountability and assistant levels, 1 through 5. And districts are classified based on the district level data. We're no longer based on the performance of our lowest performing schools. So, let's start with the normative component. There's accountability percentiles between 1 and 99, and they're calculated using all available indicators for our school. It compares schools administering the similar statewide assessments and used to identify the lowest performing schools in the state. The same calculations are used as a subgroup level to identify low performing subgroups. Last year, when we looked at our schools and compared them, we had three different categories. We had all of our elementary schools in one category, we had our middle school in another category, and our high school. Now, we have basically two categories, because the middle category does not include us. It is from middle, high school, or K-12 schools. So, we have the non-high schools, so 3 through 8 schools, our 3 elementary and a middle school, or the high school. And it's dependent on what MCAS you take. And targets are set for each accountability indicator for the school as a whole and for the lowest performing students in each school. So, if you notice that you have for all students and lowest performing students, you'll have reports in each of those categories. And the high school has additional indicators. They have a four-year graduation rate. They have an extended engagement rate. So, those students that do not graduate in four years but continue beyond that, we get points for that. Our annual dropout rate, and that advanced coursework completion. So, those are categories that are just for the high school. The second component of the accountability system is the criterion reference component, progress towards our targets. Anything that is listed as a 2 or above is improvement. The state was very clear, they wanted everyone to look at it. Even though a 2 is not meeting your target, it's still improved. And this is just an example of a criterion reference component for non-high school. And this is not Marlboro. And if you can see, they give you the total points and how many points that each school or the district has met, towards that total possible point. And they weighted for all students and lowest performing students, and then come up with a criterion reference target percentile at the bottom. Same thing with the high school, but with the additional indicators of the four-year graduation rate, the extended engagement rate, the annual dropout rate, and the advanced The way schools are categorized is a little bit different with this new system as well. Schools without required assistance or intervention are approximately 85 percent of the schools in the state. And then there's the 15 percent that schools requiring assistance are intervention. As you notice, the focused targeted supports are -- they are listed there in order of priority. So, if a school was listed for focused or targeted support because they had -- were rated between 1 and 10, that's a higher priority than a low participation rate. And then districts are similar. They're either with need assistance or intervention or do not. So, let's go on to Marlboro. So, this is our district accountability. If you look, it starts off with general information. We are a Title I district. We serve pre-K through 12. Our overall classification as a district is we are not requiring assistance or intervention as a district. We are partially meeting our targets. Some of our schools and some of our levels are stronger than others. 60 percent partially meeting targets. And then the final indicator, the district's determination or need for special education technical assistance or intervention. We meet all requirements, so we do not need any intervention or assistance in that area. And then I've included the district accountability information. So, if you look at it, it is listed, it starts off on your far left as all students, grades 3 through 8. Lowest performing students, grades 3 through 8. Then we have all students in the high school, and then lowest performing students in the high school. We have some areas of success and things that we are proud of. And then we have one area in the district that we know that we need to take immediate steps, and that's our chronic absenteeism, which across the district, we declined in almost all schools. So, we've been, the superintendent has been doing a lot of work on that recently. This next slide, I continued, I've added, this is from last year, just a brief reminder that the MCAS achievement levels are different depending on if it's the legacy MCAS or the next generation. So, with legacy, and that's at the high school and grade 5 in 8 science, we have advanced proficient needs improvement and warning. And with the next generation, we have exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. I've included just an overview, I did this last year as well, of all 3 through 8 instead of including all the schools, but I have some highlights that we wanted to share. So, for example, in Whitcomb School in grade 8 ELA, the percentage of students that meet or exceeded expectations in grade 8 increased from 26 to 39 percent, so a significant increase. In grade 6 ELA, it went from 30 to 48 percent. Jarek exceeded the state average in grade 4 math and reduced its not-meeting expectations in grade 3 math from 21 percent to 11. Kane exceeded in grade, exceeded the state average in grade 4 math. They also decreased the percentage of students not meeting the expectations in grade 3 ELA and grade 4 ELA in math. And finally, Richard School met or exceeded the state average in grade 3 ELA, grade 3 math, and grade 4 math. They also decreased the percentage of not meeting the expectation in every assessment in grade 3 and 4. This slide shows the performance of students on the legacy MCAS. For 2018, this includes grades 5 and 8 for science. The next slide will focus more on ELA and math, but I included this information to support and with the belief that it supports some of the changes recently implemented in the district as focused on science. This is the high school MCAS annual comparisons in ELA and math. And you can see that the achievement has been stable over the last year. It does not show an increase in performance as we would hope, but it has been stable. So, for example, if you look at the advanced and proficient rate for ELA in 2017 and 2018, it's both is 86 percent of proficient and above. The numbers are pretty stable. So, just a brief overview, the percentage of students proficient and above increased in grades 4, 6, 7, and 8. Grade 4 mathematics for the district, the whole district, exceeded the state average. The percentage of students not meeting expectations was reduced in ELA and mathematics in both grades 3 and 4. And the percentage of students scoring at a proficient or above in grades 10 ELA and math remains stable. So, finally, I just wanted to end with a couple of highlights of some next steps that we've taken. This was the first year that we have had a lot of this data, especially with MCAS, since June. So, many of the plans that were put into place for this year was a result of looking at data and planning all summer long with building-based teams and with the district teams. So, the first thing was, we have begun professional development for the building leaders, focused on what rigor and relevance looks like in the classroom across the whole district. We are doing a foundations implementation assessment ongoing in the K-4 buildings. That is looking at foundations and the fidelity of the program across all three schools to make sure that we have this consistent foundation in all three schools. One of the first things that Principal Riley did was teaming model in grades 9 and 10 and ability to increase the achievement across all 9th and 10th grade teams. Also, the expansion of physics at the high school, which has began this year with plans to continue building on that equitable opportunities for this for all freshman teams moving forwards. The implementation of math and literacy intervention classes at the middle grade levels. We've continued district-wide training in Wilson Reading as a Tier 3. Targeted interventions for high school students provided by the two new high school reading teachers. And we are currently beginning Lynn and Michelle an EL program review because our EL data was very strong. And before we make any or recommend any changes, we want to do a complete review of the data and what our program is currently. Any questions?
Any questions from the committee? Thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On October 2nd, Commissioner Jeff Riley came and visited the Richard Elementary School. I want to thank the Richard staff and their students for making the time to meet with the commissioner, and I want to extend my thanks to the commissioner for taking time to interact with our Richard community. I found the message from the commissioner to be empowering and to focus my efforts on teaching and learning instead of a total focus on compliance. Staff and students asked and answered questions, but I was proud to hear from everyone that there was one common theme: we love this school. So, thanks to Dr. Scazza and his entire staff for rearranging schedules to make that happen. I have begun my entry plan, and I am scheduling meetings to interview members of our community. So, my goal is to get a representative sample from every population and provide the opportunity for feedback through several channels. So, over the next month and a half, I'm going to be doing a lot of work to try to reach out to as many people as I can to interview them for my entry plan and to gather as much data as I can. So, I look forward to speaking with more people, including the mayor. I'll be asking you to interview for the entry plan as well. And I'll be asking parents and all kinds of community members who want to come and meet with me. Additionally, I'll be asking the schools to help set up time so I can speak with students and get their perspective on the experience they're having in their education, and just try to get as many data points as I can to bring it back to you. My third item is that I'm thrilled to announce that the Whitcomb School is going to have a very special partnership in June with the Boston Celtics and GE. The Brilliant Career Play Program introduces middle school students to STEM careers through hands-on learning and career exploration. We're very thankful the Boston Celtics and GE have selected Whitcomb as a site for this program. I'll bring forward more information on this later in the year, but it will be happening in the first week of June and second week of June, and it's going to engage many students for 10 days of STEM-based opportunities and learning. So, we're very excited about that. Is there any questions I can answer?
Any questions? Nope, seeing none. Assavet Valley Collaborative Representative.
Mr. Mayor, this is, as a board, it's the responsibility to nominate a representative. And in the past, you've nominated the superintendent, but I wanted to bring it back again. I did go to the first meeting as Marlboro's representative, but I hadn't, yes, I had no power. But I think it needs to be officially in the minutes of a school committee meeting before I'm on that board.
Motion to elect Superintendent Bergeron as our Assavet Valley Collaborative Representative.
Motion to approve the superintendent to be the representative. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose, carries. Resolutions. First, a delegate. Any discussion?
You want to do it again?
I'll do it. I like doing it.
Move to nominate Mrs. Matthews as the delegate to the MSC.
Motion made and seconded to approve Ms. Matthews as our delegate to the convention. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose, carries. Congratulations. Resolutions.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody ready?
Let's speed read. Do all things to all kids.
Speed read. There are nine this year. So, for those watching, every year at the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Conference, which is also joined with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, which we will all be attending in November, there are resolutions that Mrs. Matthew will vote on, and we are here to discuss them and tell her how to vote. So, the first one is regarding rejecting the arming of educators. I'm going to read the first section and then be it resolved. I presume that is okay with the committee?
Yes.
You don't have to read the whole things, right? Okay. So, the first one is, the resolution is that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees rejects the notion of providing firearms to any educators. And the rationale is the safest environment would be to provide additional mental health resources and violence prevention programs in public schools.
Motion. Sorry. Motion to accept or approve that one, right?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 1. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose, carries. Resolution Number 2.
Number 2, small and rural school, small and rural districts. This is a complicated one. It doesn't really affect us, per se, but Massachusetts has a number of small and rural school districts that have special academic, social, financial, and operational needs, and yet operate with an enviable measure of success. This one's hard to, is this? Okay. So, basically, the resolution is MASC calls for the creation of a working group to advise the legislature on the best public policy solutions to support small and rural school districts. And further, that this working group propose modifications to the foundation budget and other elements of Chapter 70 Financial Assistance Program. Designate specific instances where excessive regulation interfere with the ability of school leaders to direct the academic improvement of children. Identify and advise on eligibility for state and federal programs to support public education, and find strategies to ameliorate the impact of forces that jeopardize the growth, stability, and success of these school districts. And further, MASC opposes legislation or unlegislated regulations that would attempt to undermine the right of any city, town, or regional district to have imposed upon it a mandate to restructure, expand, regionalize, or dissolve its school district without its consent. That's the big thing. There's lots of small districts around. Some of them are struggling, some of them aren't. And this is to prevent, or to push to prevent the state coming in and telling them that they have to regionalize, that it should be up to the individual school districts to determine that for themselves.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose, carries. Number 3.
Elimination of the Federal Department of Education. The current administration has made proposals to merge the U.S. Department of Education with the U.S. Department of Labor to create the Department of Education and the workforce. Be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees work with the federal delegation to reject any notion of combining the U.S. Department of Education with other government departments. Basically, the thinking is that it will undermine both, and neither will be successful.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose, carries. Number 4.
One opposition?
I was also opposed to Resolution 1.
Did you catch that?
Resolution what?
Number 1 and number 3. Number 4, regional school transportation. Whereas among the transportation costs concerned for regional school districts is the lack of competi, among the transportation cost concerns, sorry, for regional school districts is the lack of competition for bus contracts for regular day or yellow bus services, as well as the steadily mounting cost for special education transportation. Be it resolved, to promote greater competition for bus service contracts, the legislature should eliminate Mass General Law C-71-7C and authorize a deeper analysis of the lack of bidders on school transportation contracts. This one is specific to, pretty specific to regional school transportation, but I think it affects all of us.
It does. And the authorize a deeper analysis of the lack of bidders on school transportation contracts affects every municipality and every city and town in the Commonwealth.
So, Masbo is probably in favor of this, I would think. Would you not?
I can't speak about Masbo, but I could tell you that we also are very interested in seeing why there's a lack of bidders. We just recently, last year, went out to bid with Hudson. Would have been a $14 million contract and received one bid. So, we would also love to see if there's reasons that we aren't seeing bidders. I hate to say it, but I think a competitive marketplace for employment is hurting our cause right now.
So, presumably, this Mass General Law does not allow for it?
It just allows, it would allow the regional school districts to work with other Massachusetts transit authorities to see if they could find efficiencies and scale. So, that would be something else. The second part of it is important for us.
Yeah.
But wouldn't we want to amend it to include all school districts and not just the regional school districts?
We could do that. I know that, I mean, even if it went ahead just to look at it from a standpoint of regional school districts, it would.
Did they get enough breaks?
It doesn't. I mean, the problem with a lot of regional school districts is they don't get any support for their transportation, and they're going across, I know you have a bone to pick with some of the regional school districts, but this isn't all of them.
Just the one that I have to pay for.
Right. So...
But I would say, my feeling, going back to Chair's question there, would be that it sounds like, without reading Mass General Law, that that is specific to the regional.
It may be, yeah.
And that we're not, I mean, yes, there's a lack of bidders. We know that. That affects everybody, but whatever is affect, that law is affecting them more than it's affecting us. I'd love to know why nobody else wants to bid too.
I'm just focusing on the last sentence. Sorry.
Right.
Make the recommendation that we skip the resolution. We have no skin in the game.
Well, we have to vote either way.
It's a regional issue. It's not a public school issue.
No, regional, like...
Regional school district issue.
It's, it is a public school, like Northborough, Southborough is a regional school district.
It's not affecting us.
Well, half of these don't affect us. It doesn't matter. It doesn't mean you'll vote on it.
Okay. Entain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do we want to, oh, second.
Well, you can amend it after, in the discussion, so.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
Yeah. So, do you want to add an amendment that the look at the lack of bidders?
For all school districts.
For all school districts, yes.
Yep. I'll support it on that, with that amendment.
Yes.
Okay. Duly noted.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose, carries.
Number 5, reporting and accountability standards. Whereas the Massachusetts Association of School Committees recognizes and upholds the right of any group to establish and maintain schools so long as schools are fully financed by their own supporters. This is private and home schools should be subject to governmental regulation that assures a minimum standard of instruction under the law. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC works with the legislature and Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to ensure that all students or persons in schools that receive public funds under the authority of the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education or a local public school district are held to the same standard and requirements in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I think this one is actually important, that you had read all of it, because it's not just private and home, it's any public funding.
Right. So, the other part that I didn't read is, private schools or other entities that receive public subsidies, funding, or support under state or federal law, whether directly or indirectly, should be held to the same reporting and accountability standards, including the same annual assessment of student proficiency required of public schools as a condition of continued eligibility to receive public subsidies or funding. And that schools that receive any public funding should be subject to the same statutory and constitutional requirements as public schools. So, presumably, some private schools get funding for certain things through the federal government, but they don't have to be accountable. Kids don't take MCAS.
Well, it's also Catholic schools and charter schools.
But the charter schools do take MCAS.
Right.
Right.
But not always held to the same accountability levels.
So, it's accountability, but I think also reporting standards is a big problem in the charter schools in terms of what they are required to report to the state.
It appears there's a lot more to this resolution than is written here, so.
I mean, parents send their kids to private schools for a reason. What this resolution wants to do is get the DESI and the state and federal tentacles into the private and religious school system to essentially vitiate private schools, religious schools, and the like. Let's call it for what it is.
I disagree.
I disagree respectfully with you. So, I will be voting against this resolution because there's nothing wrong with giving parents and students a myriad of choices. If they want to go to a public school system and have their kids in the schools the kids attend to, be responsive to state and federal reporting and accountability requirements, they can send their kids to the public schools. If they don't want their child's education to be held to the same standards as a public school does with respect to reporting and accountability, they can send them to the private school. It's not for the state to be interjecting itself into these universes of schools, and this is exactly what they're trying to do.
Well, I think the part that you're missing is that it's only the ones that are tied to getting public funds.
Directly or indirectly, that umbrella is so broad, you could argue any school, anywhere, gets at least some type of indirect state or federal funding. It's essentially taking all schools and sweeping them into this resolution because of that carefully and artfully crafted language, so.
I have something to say as a student. I think that my take on this is that the government is saying, hey, there are some standards that everybody should live up to, and that if we want our children in our education systems to succeed, they must meet this criteria. And I don't think that they're saying, we want to take control of the public and charter schools. I think they're saying that every child, through their right to edu- schools. I think they're saying that every child, through their right to education, deserves to be, you know, taught this much, and let's get them to this level, and make sure that they're at this level.
That may be, and I don't dispute that, Mr. Golliger. Excellent. However, again, if a parent or parents want their students to be educated to a different standard, whether that's somewhat lesser, whether that's somewhat more, that's a decision for the parents and the child to make, not the government.
Understood.
We're turning to the government for everything, and it's not their bailiwick. They shouldn't be involved in this.
Any other comments, questions on the motion to—
No, there wasn't a motion.
Wasn't a motion.
We're just having lots of discussion. Yeah, we never made it there. Um, motion to approve the resolution. Support the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Does not carry.
Woo!
Number six.
Reproductive health education. Whereas the Massachusetts Association of School Committees support the health of all students, and youth should be committed to feel empowered to make healthy and informed choices about their bodies and their relationships, the Mass Association of School Committees supports a medically accurate and age-appropriate reproductive health curriculum. Be it resolved, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees supports evidence-based reproductive health curricula. Further, we call upon the US Department of Education and the executive branch to stop their support of abstinence-only education.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Discussion? So who's going to plug in medically accurate and age-appropriate? Someone wants to do that, I'll be glad to support it. Otherwise, I have no intention.
Well, there's lots of curric— there are a lot of curriculums out there that are designed to be that. I said, the one part I didn't read is, MASC rejects the federal government's plan to redirect front funding from evidence-based programs to prevent teen pregnancy to programs that teach abstinence-only and rhythm method, rhythm method-based sex education initiative. So something has come down from Washington that wants to shift the funding.
Is Congress involved again?
Color me ignorant, but does any legitimate— well, I mean, I guess that's the crux of the issue. Does any legitimate health and wellness and sexual education curricula teach abstinence only to the exclusion of—
Well, yes.
Some Catholic schools, sorry.
They're, they do, and that's what they're trying to pull the funding from fully—
All right.
Well—
Go ahead. These are getting silly, and I'm going to start abstaining. I'm telling you right now, so.
What? I think, I think I'm against this one for now, but, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Motion made—
Oh, it was, we're on discussion, so we're on the vote.
I'll give it a courtesy second. To approve, discussion?
Mr. Golliger?
I don't know what's happening. I don't know what you guys are voting on, but I trust you, so.
Well, I— the question I have is, I don't, I don't think there's enough information in this resolution to understand, as you said, there must be something in the pipeline, but what is that something that's in the pipeline? And... So I, I too can't see myself supporting it, not knowing what, what my options are, because there's really no options clearly stated here.
So we're voting on supporting evidence-based reproductive curricula. That's the first part. Then, further, we call upon the US DOE and the executive branch to stop their support of abstinence-only education. So there must be legislation that Betsy DeVos is—
I consider myself fairly well-versed in current events and current politics, although far from a hundred percent and an expert, but I have yet to hear anything emanating from the federal government or a legislature that would ma— whether regulation or statute that would mandate the teaching of abstinence only. But obviously, something's been put out in the public domain to give, give rise to this resolution, but I haven't heard it, so.
And this resolution alone will bring me a lot of joy to listen to the conversation down there.
So without knowing about it myself, I'll have to vote against it, because I haven't heard what, I haven't heard the perceived evil that this resolution is, is attempting to, to address.
Any further discussion?
Well, because, I mean, the, the primary thing is supporting evidence-based reproductive health curricula, which I'm in favor of, so I'm voting in favor.
Senator Seaman?
My only comment would be, yes, I, I get that, Michelle, that it's the evidence-based, which I appreciate. It just keeps on reaching, and there's not a lot of depth to support it, and it kind of adds in a bunch of things. And to your point, Mrs. Matthews, kind of need a little bit more insight. So if they could really provide some more direction and information down at the conference that helped that, then, then maybe there would, I'd have a different train of thought, but right now, I don't think that there's enough information, so.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? And I'm abstaining. I'm being a—
Number seven.
Out of control.
So you're in that abstinence zone again, huh?
Yeah. These just get better.
Number seven, gender identity inclusive athletic participation policy. Whereas public school leaders need to provide educational access and maintain self-environments for all, including— did I say wrong? Maintain safe environments for all, including LGBTQ students. And whereas all students must be protected from discrimination, harassment, and bullying. And whereas LGBTQ students experience adverse incidents at alarming rates compared to their counterparts. And whereas it is the job of the schools to provide safe and supportive environments for optimal well-being. And whereas there are instances in athletics where LGBTQ students do not have protection nor the opportunity for privacy, be it resolved that MASC help file legislation that would have the effect of protecting LGBTQ students from discrimination, harassment, and bullying by— that's weird. That schools should treat students based on their gender identity, protect their privacy, providing access to gender-neutral restrooms, locker rooms, and private stall showers, using their preferred pronouns, embedding sensitivity training in professional development, and providing uniform accommodations. The rationale, the at-risk behavior for LGBTQ students, which includes suicidal ideation, is sharply reduced with some basic interventions. With federal laws that are vague with the protection of our vulnerable students, public schools in Massachusetts should take steps to ensure their protection. With guidance from the legislature, LGBTQ students throughout Massachusetts will have better protections and will have reduced adverse behaviors.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Discussion?
I, I, I think I'd like to have an amendment, not just legislation, but there needs to be something to do with MIAA since they govern the athletics, athletics in Massachusetts.
What protections don't we have today?
Ooh. Wait till, wait till the vote in November. Right now, we have protections. We'll see what happens.
Today.
So, so I, I would like it to also, that whatever legislation is recommended, that MIAA is held accountable for their, um, for making sure that it's in their bylaws.
Senator Seaman?
To that point, I would say, MIAA actually would need to go back and make amendments across the board.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, across the board, but not just in their bylaws, only because I can say, I'm specifically relative to providing uniform accommodations. That's something that's on a sport-by-sport basis, dependent upon discussions at, around the table. So that's, that is a concern that I have. I totally support this.
Completely.
There must be an accountability factor with the MIAA, having to make sure that they are following the same rulings across the board, because right now, unfortunately, it's, there are different, um, levels of following.
So are you prepared to make a second amendment on this one as well?
Yes. So, uh, motion to amend this res— was it Resolution seven, to include accountability by MIAA within whatever legislation is proposed by Massachusetts, to maintain, to ensure, to ensure that these standards of protection are in place.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And I'm present again.
Number eight, sports wagering. The General Court, in its effort to fund public education to the full extent of the law, including partially funded and unfunded mandates imposed upon school districts, is limited in its ability to do so by the limits to revenues generated from the current tax codes. And advocates for public education have articulated several important strategies to improve public schools, many of which require additional funding appropriated by the General Court. And the Commonwealth has begun implementing casino gambling as a means of generating additional tax revenues. And in Nevada, sports wagering, wagering has provided an additional element to legalize gambling that has generated additional revenue. Whereas a recent decision by the Supreme Court of the United States, Murphy versus National Collegiate Athletic Association, has overturned federal restrictions on wagering on the outcome of sporting events. And whereas the Commonwealth has had a long and successful history of administering a public lottery program that is convenient, accessible, and locally based, as well as easily adaptable to accommodating wagering, therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees requests that should the General Court enact legislation to legalize wagering on sporting events, the General Court shall commit a portion of the revenues generated from sports wagering to public education.
And also a portion of the tax on marijuana, but—
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Which, Senator Seaman?
I was, uh, four.
Four. And I'm abstaining. Yeah.
Resolution nine, access to information for parents and students who are clients of special education. Whereas the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is a law, IDA, IDEA, is a law that makes available a free and appropriate public education to eligible children with disabilities throughout the nation and ensures special education and related services to those children. And in the law, Congress states that disability is a natural part of the human experience and in no way diminishes the right of individuals to participate in or contribute to society. Improving educational results for children with disabilities is an essential element of our national policy of ensuring equality of opportunity, full participation, independent living, and economic self-sufficiency for individuals with disabilities. Whereas the stated purpose of the IDA is to ensure that the rights of children with disabilities and parents of such children are protected to ensure that educators and parents have the necessary tools to provide, to improve educational results for children with disabilities by supporting system improvement activities, coordinated research, and personnel preparation, coordinated technical assistance, dissemination, and support, and technology development, and media services. And whereas parents are also members of the team during the IEP process and should not, and should, but do not always have access to the assessments and other information related to their children, with sufficient advance time to review them, consult with experts or advocates, or prepare for meetings at which IEP plans are discussed. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC urges the legislature to amend the state law to require that parents and students be provided with a copy via email or mail of all the assessments that are performed for students in the family's preferred language at least five days prior to any meeting at which parents and students will review a proposed IEP.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would just like to reflect on this and have it be understood that there is already significant due process, uh, time and allowances within the IEP process, and that we are already, um, you know, following the guidance and the law, that we do provide this information two days in advance of the IEP team meeting. It is generally discussed at the IEP team meeting, so there are plenty of opportunities during that time period for this information to be reviewed. And the parent always has the option of, of basically suspending said team meeting and asking for another team meeting if there needs to be more time to review any documents. I understand this. I, I get this. I understand what people are saying. All, all I guess I'm asking is, this also runs contrary to many of the other proposals we just gone over, which is to reduce the amount of regulation legislation that school districts are under. So I would just ask that we think about this in a different way about the due process of parents' rights, understanding that they have significant due process rights currently stated under law, both federally and by state. So, that's just my two cents.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Senator Seaman?
Um, the only thing I was going to say where I, I'm, I mean, I'm glad to hear that there is a time period. I am a bit concerned only having two days. I just know, if you're preparing for that kind of a discussion, two days is kind of a tight timeframe, especially if in your head you have some kind of question about it and you want to reach out to someone for support. Sometimes it just takes time. Obviously, I don't want to look at causing more regulation and more problems, but I, I, I do have some concerns only hearing that it's a two-day, because I, I heard five-day, and I was like, oh, okay. Well, I guess it's just a week. So, just voicing that.
Mr. Gary?
So this is just a question. So essentially, the only difference is this is going from two days to five days. Is that how I'm hearing that?
Well, you do—
So supporting this would just increase the— is there others, is there other stuff of, in, around the regulation?
Not that I see in this. It's just basically proposing that we provide the assessments in the home language within five days of the IEP team meeting instead of the two, which is what we do now.
I was going to say, so we do it already, we just do it to two days instead of five? Okay.
This also doesn't then change the timelines for post-meeting. So should you create more time on the front end, they're not creating any more time on the back end to make decisions. I'm only stating that there already is a significant due process piece in there. I'm not taking a stance in this either way, because I understand what they're trying to do here, and I, I, I support the idea that parents need information to make these decisions on IEPs. I just don't know if this is the best way to do it. That's all.
Mr. Boenhead, Joe?
I guess my question is, if, if the current law states, as you're saying, that the due, with the due process and that the two days—
But is that, you didn't state that that was law. You said, that's what we do.
Well, I was just going to say, do, do we know if, if it's law that it's a minimum of two days, or is that just our current practice?
I believe that's law, but I can find that and get back to you.
Okay. But, so I guess more of my concern is that, the more of, for other districts, is that the actual compliance is occurring. And so if that's what they're trying to get at, that that's not what this says. And it, yes, I would be concerned, as Ms. Hennessy brought out, that making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, yes, we're doing what we're doing, but are we— there's nothing additional in here that we're not doing. So is it just making sure every district is doing the job that they're supposed to be doing?
So we talked about this at the MASC board meeting a lot, and there are districts that don't do any of it. Like, people, parents show up to IEP meetings, they've never gotten any information prior to the meeting, be it in English or in their home language. And so if there is a law that states they're supposed to be doing some things, there are some districts that aren't following it. And that's— And that's what some of the conversation was around at that board meeting.
But that's not what this resolution is saying.
It doesn't. Right. And I don't know if the... I, I apologize. I could go back to my notes from the meeting to see what, um... I, I don't recall a two-day window being talked about, so, you know, I'd be interested to see if that is the current law. So, right, is it, do we need to change the law, or do districts just need to follow the law?
They still say that it's to amend the state law.
To amend it.
Oh, it does say to amend state law.
Yeah, but it could be silent law.
Could be, it could be amend to change current terms, or it could be amend to insert a whole new term or provision.
Well, even like the via copy or via email, that probably didn't exist when they wrote that, that, yeah. The email option, you know.
Yeah, I think that the biggest issue was making sure that it was translated into a language that the parents can understand. And I, you know, the five-day, if the five-day is the only reason to, uh, you know, to cha- I, I don't think that's the whole thing. I don't think that it was, that the big deal was changing it from five days, from two days to five days. I think the issue was more making sure that it was in the family's language, and they got it before the meetings.
I, I mean, one of my queries was, does five days create a lot of dead time where nothing's really getting done? Because if you've got to give them the five days notice, then you can't schedule the IEP for five days after sending the notice. That's a week where you can't...
No, there's, the IEP meetings are already scheduled.
Right. It's just making sure that...
They're scheduled like a year in advance, some of them.
Right.
So they have the meeting scheduled. They just have to count back to make sure they get it five days prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Because they do the IEP meetings once a year, so they can set, unless there's a reason.
There are some annuals, but, yeah. Not necessarily all of them, though, right? So not all of them, you know.
I, I mean, I would support this if it was a, it was to ensure that districts are complying with current law and, and that there's no additional...
Burden.
Burden.
Right.
Than is currently in the law. Because in our case, we're complying, obviously, but, um... So. There's a motion on the table, so.
Is there a motion?
No, that was one we jumped into again.
No.
Heidi, you did make a motion.
No, I made a motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? In favor? Opposed? Does not carry.
Uh, that was the last one, all right?
Bylaws.
So we have a proposal to amend the bylaws. Basically, this is just to change the date of, it's kind of more of an inter- well, obviously, it's a bylaw of MASC. The annual meeting of the desert, at the, the, the annual meeting of the association to be known as the delegate assembly shall be held at such hour on such a business day, not earlier than September 20th, nor later than November 30th, and each year at such place within the MASC Board of Directors shall determine. Resolutions and other purposes for which an annual meeting is to be held additional to those prescribed by law by the agreement of the association, bless you.
Thank you.
And by these bylaws may be specific to the Board of Directors and by written application made to the Secretary of Treasury, not later than July 1st in any year, by at least five active members located in at least two divisions. Resolutions submitted by a single school committee may be presented to the delegate assembly upon approval of the Board of Directors on the recommendation of the resolutions committee. If an approved, if an annual meeting is not held within the date specified above, a special meeting may be held upon by the Board of Directors with all the force and effect of an annual meeting. So the Board asks to amend the bylaw change by changing the July 1st date to no later than June 1st. Moving the submission date of resolutions to June 1st will give adequate time for the resolutions to committee to meet and report out. It also aligns with the submission date for the nomination of officers.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Thank you.
Have fun.
I will.
Policy acceptances. Policy 7.31, overnight travel.
Thank you. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments on 7.310 overnight travel for this policy that was presented two weeks ago.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Ms. Matthews.
I did have the chance to speak to Ms. Hennessy prior to the last meeting, because I wasn't at the last meeting. But since, were there any additional amendments I have? I do apologize, I did not watch the meeting. So, so what is submitted? Because you just said amended, that's why.
Just, just as, as we had.
As submitted.
As submitted.
Okay, thank you. That's all the clarification.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Policy point, uh, 7.32.
So I'd like to make a motion to vote on the student extended field trip protocols, which is policy 7.320.
Motion made and seconded to approve, policy number 7.320. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Policy 8.3.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to vote on policy 8.300 restraint.
Uh, motion made and seconded to approve, policy 8.3. Restraint prevention and behavior support. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. 8.120, student records.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to vote on policy 8.120, student records.
Motion made and seconded to approve, uh, policy 8.120, student records. Any discussion? Yep. Ms. Matthews.
That's the one for removal, isn't it?
Um, no. Student records has been really tapered down.
Oh, it's tapered down. I'm sorry. Okay. Yep.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Thank you very much.
Acceptance of grants. Follett buyback program. Jarred School, $23.77.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Christopher and Jamie Campbell, Richa School, $200.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Forts of School Subcommittee's. Anyone reporting? Ms. Tennessee.
Thank you. Um, policy subcommittee, submitting, we had a meeting last week. Um, we're just continuing to work on a number of different policies. If there is something that you all see, that you feel, that you want for us to bring forth and put on the agenda, please go ahead and bring that to our attention. We're continuing to move forward on, um, Chapter Two, and a number of other policies are just continuing to be reviewed. Uh, we'll have another meeting coming up. I do not have a date for you yet, but I will advise. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committees? Seeing none. Uh-oh. Ms. Matthews.
While I was away, apparently, we have reached a tentative agreement with the Marlboro Secretaries.
The Office Support Association.
Office Support. Thank you. Yay! Support Association. MOU will be forthcoming.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none. Members forum. This is Ryan.
Just a reminder that tomorrow night, October 10th, at 7:00, at the Wickham Middle School, is the Your Kids Going to Be Okay. Author, speaker, uh, what's his name? I don't see, I can't read that. Oh, Michael Delman, the author, will be here to speak about it. I feel like I haven't seen a lot about it. So I hope people will be there. It sounds interesting.
Any other members?
Try to get some last-minute marketing effect in there.
Thank you.
So, should we, uh, well, you can say it. So, so the Vice Chair, Mrs. Bodenhenger, and myself will be departing on Thursday with the Acoruna Exchange Program representing the city, the mayor, and the school committee. So I want to thank everybody for allowing us to go and being able to represent our fine city and this program, and thank you, Mrs. Patel, for all the hard work that she does and getting ready, these kids ready for this experience and this 14-hour plane ride.
So we will be going with the delegation. So there are 12 students, three faculty advisors, and two additional staff, and the two of us, so.
And we will report back.
We will.
With the kids.
Do you have an official capacity, such as chaperone? Are you going just to, uh...
We don't have to chaperone. I do have to make a speech, though, partially in Japanese. My Japanese is a little rusty, so. I've been practicing to do part of it in Japanese. And, uh...
Safe travels. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring good tidings.
Anyone else?
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Thank you very much.